All right, welcome Woodbury to your Village Board meeting of May 23rd, 2024. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of Memorial Day for all those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, as I always do, I would like to start by introducing your Village Board of Trustees, starting at the far end with Trustee Jim Fryban. I don't know if he's running late or if he will be absent, but Matt Fabro is not here as of yet. So next up is Trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is Deputy Mayor Vic Forelli. Next to him is Village Clerk Jessica McLennan, and I am your Mayor Andrew Jagomaza. We're going to jump right in and get started with introductory local law three of 2024, the public hearing amending the zoning map of Village of Woodbury. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law three of 2024 amending the zoning map. The public notice was printed in the Times World Record on May 6th, 2024. So let me start with Village Attorney Kelly Norton, and just tell us what we're doing here today.
So I have provided to the board... I don't dress like that. I've provided to the board a draft local law for your consideration that amends the zoning map to place the senior housing district over a certain portion of property in the village. I did provide a redlined version to the planning board. The planning board reported back to you in support of the redlined version as well as H2M's comments. I think when...
Yep.
It is?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, oh, I got to get really close. Oh, God, okay. I'll start over.
You want to start from this?
Let me start all over.
Yeah.
Okay. So I provided the board with a draft local law which will, which intends to place the senior housing district overlay zone over certain property that is located within the Village of Woodbury. This law was also referred to the Planning Board and the Orange County Planning Department. The Orange County Planning Board responded back to you and gave your report. I had provided to the Planning Board a redlined version of the proposed law as it further clarified what exactly was looking to happen. And when Mr. Fow gets up and explains, and he has a colored map, it'll explain it a little bit more, but there are some shifting of lot lines that are proposed in this application. And some of the zoning changes that are set forth in this law are really to resolve some split zones, some lots that are split zoned between two. So that will hopefully be corrected. As part of this, the Planning Board also was in support of H2M's memo, which I believe you all have. The Orange County Planning Department, it was referred to them on March 19th. They did not provide a response back. And just lastly, the Planning Board considered this when they reviewed the entire project under SEACRA, and they issued a negative declaration back in February, which was provided to you as well.
All right, thank you, Attorney Norton. We'll start with the applicant. So George Luthkau, you're representing the applicant here tonight. The floor is yours. And by the way, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome Matt Fabro, Trustee Fabro, to the podium. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Apologies for everybody. I'm sorry I was late.
It's all good. It's all good. All right, George, you got it? Is the mic on?
I think so.
There it is.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. We're, we've been here for a long time. We began this process in 2017. I was trying to give, think of an event that might sort of help you put it in perspective. I was going to mention the inauguration of a certain individual that January, but I thought, let me make it a little bit more personal. In that year, my son was entering the last year of middle school, and this last Saturday, he graduated from college. And all that time, we've been working on this. So it has been a long time. It has been a thorough review. I can guarantee and represent and warrant that. There's been studies of wetlands, there's been studies of water supply, there's been studies of traffic, there's been studies of rattlesnakes. We've covered all the bases, and I think that was in, it was in large part because the Planning Board and your board asked us to do it, and, and our client did. So I think when you look at the result, the environmental assessment that was done, it was done twice, once in 2018, that one I think was eight pages. The one that was most recently done was 13 pages, and it covers all, I think, of the issues that you analyze under SEACRA, and it explains how those issues are being addressed by the project. One thing I'd like to mention before I turn it over to Mr. Fow, the project did go to D E C in 2022. The purpose of that was to look at wetland issues that were raised by the village engineer and address them. In the course of doing that, there was identification of a potential rattlesnake habitat, and we addressed that as well. But one of the benefits of that analysis was the stormwater pond was relocated from where it was proposed, which would require a wetland crossing, to a location that does not require that crossing. So I think over time, this project started out okay and became better, and all these issues have been addressed. I'm sure you're, I anticipate you will be hearing comments from the public that raise some concerns. I'd like to address them with the professionals at the end of the presentation. I would like Mr. Fow to make a brief presentation, show and tell basically of the zoning, the proposed site plan, and the rendering that shows the billing that has been proposed here. So I'll take the liberty of turning it over to Mr. Fow.
Can everybody hear? Menza, Menza? Hi, George, you're going to have to speak up, my friend.
Good evening. My name is Joe Fow. Can everybody hear me now? I have a few different renderings up here. I don't know how to angle this so everybody can see it, but I'll do my best here so the board can see as well. This first is, is a subdivision slash lot line adjustment plan. And what it is, we have five...
Yeah. Why don't you move to the other side?
All right.
And that way, the public can see it, and we could still see the...
This is the total of the property. There are five tax lots, and what we've done is we've consolidated some and actually created some lot lines. They're colored. What we have here is Lot Number One, which is in the magenta. This is where the proposed zone change and the proposed senior citizen housing project is to be located. There's a second commercial lot, which is in blue, which is also along the state highway. There is no proposal for that particular lot at this time, but it will stay commercial. And then what you see in yellow are two remaining portions. The lower level here is all wetlands, and this portion up here is, has an easement to the existing trailer park, and what the proposal is to take both of these because there's encroachments from the trailer park along this area here, these buildings right here, and parts of these buildings in the yellow. So the proposal is to take those yellow portions and add them to the trailer park. Now, in doing that, what it does is, this is your zoning map with your different zones in here. Right now, most of our project is in the LC zone. The rear portion is in the R2A, and the proposal is to take this portion of LC, convert it, it's about 15.2 acres, into the senior overlay zone, keep the remaining Lot Two in the LC zone, and then take these two portions that I had mentioned before that go to the trailer park, add them to the trailer park, and put them into the R1A so that there's no spot zoning within. There's really, as far as these two portions go, there's really no development that can happen there. It's wetlands plus, but there's encroachments. It just made things nice and clean. So that, that's pretty much how the zone change is. And I just want to say what our proposal is. Is, as you probably know, the property is across the street from Timber Trail, the Timber Ridge. We have a single entrance coming in. It's going to be serviced by two buildings. There's a total of 84 units, 84 two-bedroom units in two buildings, 144 parking spaces. We do have a single entrance. We will have an emergency access that goes out through the trailer park should, for some reason, this main entrance be compromised for any reason. Everything's going to be served by central water and sewer. We have done some initial stormwater, but this, this will absolutely be required to go to D E C for a, a coverage under their stormwater discharge. So really, what we need to do when we do this project, we have to show that we are attenuating all of our peak flows for all of the storm events and also treat the stormwater so that there'll be no impacts. There's, we, we understand that there are flooding, there's a flooding history along the rear of the property. We will be required to attenuate our storms so that there's no, we can't stop the flooding. It's, it's beyond our control, but there will be no increase based on our project to flooding or increased stormwater for any of the storm events, which is a 210, 25, and 100-year storm for all, for all of those storm events. And then quickly, I just wanted to describe because people had concerns about the phasing. What we did was, I'm sorry here, hold on. The Planning Board had some concern about the timing of this. So what we're proposing to do is we, we are going to have an initial phase, which is just going to be a grading and stabilization phase, which we will come in and we will grade the site within a foot of final grade and stabilize the entire site. We figure that, that'll be a short period of time. And then what we'll do is we'll come in with two separate phases. Building One will be Phase Two, and build with, which will include all of the stormwater facilities. So all the stormwater facilities will be put in during that initial phase, and then Phase Three will be the remaining, the second building. And then what we've done is there, we have provided a rendering. This looks two-dimensional, but if you look at the site plan, these, these parts of the building stick out, and the, the center actually goes in, that's almost, not, not an L, but there's like almost a courtyard appearance on the inside of this. The building is less than 35 foot in height, and that is our rendering at this point of what we consider to be building. And I think that's about it.
That's it? All right, does anyone on the board have any questions at this time?
I would like to just clarify.
Your mic's not on. James.
I just wanted to clarify, the lead agency on this was the Planning Board?
Yes, it was.
And do we have a copy of the negative declaration covering the zoning?
Yes, it was sent to you on February 22nd.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay, anyone else on the board?
Yes, I have a question. When you go back to the flooding, that area tends to flood?
Yes, sir.
And you said you did some work to alleviate the flooding, but you're going to be building a big structure. How is that going to impact the houses and the people that already live there, particularly the trailer park?
There's a 100-foot floodplain which follows this line right here. It pops up, comes in, and goes around this pond here, okay? That's the 100-year floodplain. What we, we are completely outside of that 100-year floodplain, so we are not encroaching it, we're not filling it, so we will not be taking up any flood storage on there. What we will be doing is, through a series of stormwater practices, mainly, you know, a stormwater pond, we will be attenuating the peak flows for all the storm events. So in other words, our stormwater's going to come in, and it'll attenuate over time. It'll be stored during, it'll be stored during the storm events, and it'll be, it'll be released over longer periods of time so that there's no increase to the area of flooding past what we, what's, what's currently there. And with any luck, if we have room, we'll actually decrease it. We, you always try, at least a minimum equal, try to go lower.
So then the water that would normally go into the ground, that's not going to be able to because of the building in the parking lot, is going to be rerouted and slowly put back in?
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
All right, that's, that's my question. I just want to make sure the flood was addressed.
And, and that will be reviewed by both the town engineer and the D E C as far as the design to verify that we, we, you know, we comply.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? The engineer? George, you have anyone else to present?
That was their question.
Yeah, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. I just wanted to make sure you had no one else here. I thank you, and I thank you for using the word magenta, because purple would have been just, just letting people know. So, anyway, we will go out to the public for public comment, and I will start with the back row. All right, anyone wishing to speak on this? This is a public hearing. That would be...
I jumped.
You jumped? Okay. Do you want to notice that she's not sitting with her husband?
Good evening, Maria Hunter, Woodbury Village, Town, Highland Mills, wherever you want to call me.
Just speak, speak, yes. There you go.
The status right now, where is it at, with the Planning Board, before I go into my...
The Planning Board has completed SEACRA. They do still have to, obviously, they can't get any approval because there's no law with the zoning designation signed to it yet.
Is there still going to be a public hearing for the public, for the Planning Board?
Yes. They haven't held that yet.
All right, so a lot of our questions can go to the Planning Board if this moves forward. Okay. So that takes care of that question, that question. And I understand, being lead agency, all the documents went out to all the prospective entities that have been notified. Traffic study, I was just curious as to what year it was actually done, because in the last 18 to 24 months, there have been numerous accidents. You can go out there today, and you can see the double tire skid marks by Timber Trail. To me, that's a concern, and this was a concern back in 2017 and 2018, when this was before the Planning Board originally. By doing this development, and I didn't catch, was it one building? It used to be two buildings. Is it one building now? It's still two buildings.
84 units.
84 units for two buildings, and what I just saw with that design was like, oh my goodness. I've had a lot of people come talk to me. We're at physical therapy across the street. People are saying, oh my goodness, we're not going to see the trees anymore. We feel sorry for the people who are down below with the senior zoning. The impact alone with the traffic and the flooding, we don't have 100-year storms anymore. We have storms that are incredible. Look what happened just alone today in Greenwood Lake. Impacts of water, not even into the wetlands. The trailer park is always getting flooded, and that's without having this 84-unit building being built there with parking lots for 144 parking spots. So I presume that only some of the units are only going to get one car parking, and some of them are going to get two, because 84 and 84 would be 168. So you're short. So not everyone's going to get two parking spots, let alone visitors. I see this as a huge issue, and to get into other issues with that, so that's the flooding, the traffic, and the zoning itself. You're taking, what's it, the SBLs, I'm going to say SBLs, it's called section block and lot numbers, for those of you who might not know that. There are five lots involved, but two of them, SBL, it's 218-27 and 218-113. You're putting into residential one acre, which you both said, I believe, 7 and 13 are the, the one that's going into the back, the flood area. Why not just make it all senior housing? Why do residential? If it's in the flood zone already, and it's wetlands, why put it into residential one acre if you can't build on it? It doesn't make sense this, by putting those two lots and splitting them, because you're splitting those two lots from the five lots for the housing. So that, I don't understand why that is being done. If you want this as senior housing, put all five lots into it, whether it's for wetlands, flooding, or whatever. So that is one of the problems that I have with this, with that zoning. And it's just, where do I go with this? The grading, the stabilization, we've seen what has happened within Woodbury, where grading and stabilization doesn't occur, doesn't work, because people don't follow the rules. And if this doesn't work down there with the senior housing, we're going to have a major issue on our hand. So to say I am not in favor of this law of doing senior housing, because a lot of people have been asking me, is it, is it spot zoning because you're only doing this for one area? And when you do, when you do a special zone, which Woodbury Junction, which is across from the high school, that was a very specific zone change, because it had open space and also was town property at the time, it was a town, and now it's a village, and you have open space areas, and that was considered, and that was called cluster housing. Down here, I just don't see with all that, with all that pavement going in and the movement of emergency vehicles at one exit and one, one entrance and one exit. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Stephen Gargan...
It's on, you got it.
Stephen Gargan, on, yeah?
Yep.
Excellent. Oakland Avenue. So in hearing this, well, I was here two weeks ago showing you guys firsthand is the consequences of changing the zoning, allowing this clustering, allowing all of this stuff in. And what I heard today was the same old song and dance that was pre-2006 with W P3, Woodbury Junction, which was, let us do this, we're going to roll this excess that we don't want into park, wetlands, no zoning change, we're going to give it to somebody else, that's what they said up there, and then commercial stays commercial, just give us this variance. And from what I'm hearing here is, you know, D E C is going to look at stormwater and discharge, they never revisit it, you know, the clear, the clearing grading, to me, it's, you know, it's, you're going to have a big pile of dirt like we have everywhere else that is not going to be addressed, you're going to get dirty, silt, muddy runoff. The next thing was stabilization, which is putting up janky silt fences around, and when they blow down and no one ever fixes them, and we can't get anybody to, to go back up and enforce that. And then finally is stormwater stabilization, which is catch basins on the paved lot which drain into, down by the trailer parks. And I know trailer parks flood, and, because it's been an ongoing issue, and how in the world we would even be sitting here saying, an area that's already in a flood zone, we're going to allow this, and somehow magically, the town engineer and D E C are going to do a flood review, and if there's any problems whatsoever, where do we go back to to get a fix? So I'm just saying my piece for what it's worth as a personal account. Thank you.
John Keller, Highland Mills.
Bring it up to you, yeah. Sorry, John. You're usually good at it.
I usually can, yes.
You know, I heard a lot about rattlesnake study and all this other study. I didn't hear anybody say anything about flood study in the trailer park. Now, I can tell you, I know numerous times that trailer park flooded, and they were gaining access by boat. And I also know for a fact that once you start digging on the high side of a trailer park, you are going to jeopardize everything below it. So everything you do on 32 is going to be hit on the low end of that trailer park. And all you guys are going to do is worry about your building on the top. You aren't going to care about those people in that trailer park. You're going to say you are, but you're not. Okay? Think about the fire department, the ambulance corps, Rob's guys, that all have to go in there when we have the devastating storms that we have time and time again, that have to go in and get these people out of here, and how much damage they get every time. They lose everything. These aren't simple little storms. If you need a senior housing center somewhere in this town, go find another place to put it. Don't put it on 32. Here's property all over. You don't need it right there. That's a, 32 right there at that intersection is terrible for accidents. Go find another piece of property. Start this thing over again. I don't get what the big reasoning for putting it right there. Think about the other residents in this town and stop thinking about yourself.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in that back, back row? All right. Next row up. You go ahead, Maria, go ahead. It's a public hearing. You forgot something.
Maria?
Maria, too.
Hold on, Maria?
Maria. Turn your, turn your mic on.
Can you just move those? I don't want anybody to trip over them. Thank you.
That guy is such a good guy, Vic.
Green light's on. Green light go?
Yeah.
The one other thing I...
Mic up.
When you do senior housing, I've seen different, senior housings in different states. You have availability with a sidewalk, busing, you put a senior housing in there, they have a bank right next door, across the street, you can't cross safely right now, there's a post office. What amenities are you given to a senior housing? Is senior housing considered 55 active adult? What are we talking about age? 55 active adult, you're going to have at least two cars going into here, and if it's a person that's a little older, like myself, Rob, I'm a little older than 55, just a touch, a scooch. I'm what?
34.
I'm 34? I love you, Kelly. I've known you way too long to be 34. But the thing of it is, for senior housing, what amenities will be given to these people to go shopping, to the doctor, in a safe manner? There aren't sidewalks on that side of the street until you get to Ford Avenue. And the safety of, of the seniors, or active adults, I would call them, because we are active adults, and, and some of them have a wheelchair or walker, how are they going to get from their senior center to Jay's Deli to get their lunch or something? So that's another issue with this. It's not inclusive to what an active adult senior needs.
Thank you, Maria.
Robin, where are you?
She's going to cut this way.
It's easier just to hand it off. It's easier to hand it to you.
Nobody, nobody's timing you, Robin. Nobody's timing you.
Hello?
Hello, Robin Kraus.
As if you didn't know that. Um, all right.
I can't tell you without...
Hello.
I'm trying.
I am 100% opposed to your changing zoning and to senior housing, and the major reason for that, there are many, but the one particularly is, they don't even meet the village code parameters for senior housing. There's no walkability, there's no medical facilities nearby, there's no supermarket nearby, there, there is a post office. As Maria had said, you cross Route 32, and I do it often, with my life in my hands, because of the trucks primarily. It, it would be a nightmare, an absolute nightmare for anybody that would want that kind of housing. Not to mention, in the code, 310... Not to mention, in the code, 310-36 subsection B.2, under applicability, it says in your code, "Senior citizen housing site shall provide residents unreasonable access to such conveniences and facilities as public transportation, we don't have. Hospital, we don't have. And medical services, which we really don't have anymore. Shopping, not for a supermarket, minimal shopping at best. Banking, yes, one bank. Drugstores, yes, one drugstore nearby. Religious, cultural, and recreation facilities, and personal services, minimal at best." So that's a major contention for me. The other one certainly is the CECA and the NEGDEC. I am still getting over the fact that a negative declaration was adopted by the planning board. I really, really, really think it should be revisited. Because the negative declaration that was adopted on February 21st in Code 617.7 of the DEC CECA regulations outlines criteria for determining significance and the impacts and the considered indicators for the significant adverse impacts to the environment. And they are listed. Adverse changes to the environment, reduction of wildlife habitat, hazard to human health, substantial changes in the use of the land, creating a conflict with adopted community plans and goals, and apparent impairment, sorry, of community character. Well, all of those are yes. So why do we still have a negative declaration? I don't totally get that. Actually, I don't get it at all. In terms of water and sewer, the village board, I believe, expanded or extended the moratorium because of limited water, until the wells are online and all that. You're also under a DEC court order for the Hollis Street...
EPA.
Thank you. Yeah, it's EPA, sorry. For the Hollis Street pump station. So adding 84 units, two bedrooms or whatever. I mean, do you really want to add more to such an existing problem? You know, again, I don't see that. So I do actually disagree with your consultants. I'm sorry, respectfully, certainly, but I do. So basically, I would hope you don't go with this.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else in that row? I don't even know what number it is.
Good evening. Louis Greco, Highland Mills.
Your name again?
Louis Greco.
Okay.
Without going into too much detail, I'd like to echo the sentiments regarding transportation, amenities, activities, in particular, the pedestrian connectivity. It would appear that, you know, if any crossing of 32 would need to take place, it would be at high risk. Everyone that comes down Timber Trail, waiting for traffic, already knows it's very... People come down a blind spot and at a high rate of speed. So it's very concerning if an elderly person needed to cross at that intersection or anywhere in the vicinity. So if pedestrian traffic and connectivity wasn't considered, it certainly should be. With the peak hours, you know, being early, early in the morning and rush hour at night. In terms of amenities, if amenities weren't considered on the property itself, and there aren't specific amenities that are in the vicinity and safe walking distance, then is there enough space on this property to have certain amenities? If it's not shopping, but leisure activities and so forth, that they wouldn't have to walk a great distance to be able to enjoy that property? So if this property is to move forward, are we actually creating a space that is the best spot for senior living? If, I understand that the parking multiplier is 1.75, so it is, you know, concurring with the ordinance. I would suggest, though, I don't know how old that is. I think it might be 2012 that that multiplier or that section of the code was enacted. A lot has changed in 10 years. I can say in Timber Ridge, 1.75 is a fraction of what is needed. So if that is something that would be considered, potentially land banking, additional parking space for the likelihood that additional parking would be needed. And lastly, the phasing approach, certainly understand it, but I would ask that if the phasing is going to change drainage patterns, and in that interim, the drainage patterns are changing from somewhat, you know, more wooded to effectively, you know, grass and a higher rate of runoff, that there be some temporary stormwater considered in that interim phase? Because if there is already flooding in the trailer park, land grading and stabilizing will be helpful, but it won't solve the intermediate problem of additional runoff and peak runoff without stormwater mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh-oh. Now we're in for it.
Ed DeHesu, Highland Mills. I'm going to repeat some of the stuff that was said already. My main concern is traffic in the area. This is not a good place for this development. And besides runoff of water, there's no way they can actually prevent additional flooding downtown, down the bottom of the hill where the homes are right now. So I don't foresee it being a good location for this development. This doesn't make sense to be put here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Catherine Profeta at 20 Spring Lake Road in Highland Mills. So apologies to the gentleman who's been at this since 2017, but I just learned about this two weeks ago. And I've been trying to study up really fast with the documents that are on the website. We've been living here since October 2021, my husband and I, when we purchased 20 Spring Lake Road. We bought this house in large part because of its proximity to the wetlands, to the amazing birds, the wildlife and the habitat there. There are so many different animals that come through our property, and that is a large part of why we're there. One thing I want to say upfront is, my home and the homes of my neighbors on Spring Lake Road are not on the maps that you've been seeing and that are online. It's, the trailer park is well representative, and I do agree that the flooding problem there for them is very intense and of great concern. But it's also a concern for us. We are right on the other side of these wetlands, sort of. My house is near that sort of small pond that's at the intersection of what was magenta and yellow on the map. And we have already in the last year once had a flood that came way past that 100-year floodplain. And I know that's the case for my neighbors as well. Also, I'm concerned that where the wetlands extend to is beyond where they're marked on those maps, because the wetlands are contiguous outside the parcels that are being looked at for development. So things, while it may look like it's only being affected, those wetlands that are inside those parcels, it actually connects to much greater wetlands outside. And obviously, we all know that water doesn't respect boundary lines. So that's a current concern as well. But what it comes down to is, my two main concerns that I'm trying to learn very fast about are wetlands and natural habitat and flooding. And they're both for the town at large and for my property in particular. My understanding is that these wetlands should be under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I did not see any documents saying that they signed off on this. Maybe I've missed something. I do not understand what authority exactly is given the negative declaration or from what state or federal authorities those decisions were made. So do we have anything that says that the DEC says this is okay? I know they say they don't have jurisdiction, but they do have jurisdiction over Woodbury Creek, just to, I think, the east of that. So surely, they do care what runs out of the wetlands into that creek, which is protected. So, you know, as other people have said, there is so much impervious blacktop going in. There's no way it's not going to create some extra runoff into an area that is already having a massive flooding problem and also potentially pollution into a major habitat for all these amazing... You'll have to come to my house and see how many amazing birds and frogs and turtles we have. My husband's laughing at me.
Who's cooking?
He's a really good cook.
Okay. There you go.
We also have just questions about what's going to happen with the trees in the larger property, not just the area where the development is, but is the wooded area that's in and adjacent to the wetlands going to be preserved as it is? That land is like a sponge, and those trees help keep the soil intact. And I don't have any information from what I looked at online about whether that land is going to be left forested or is going to be, you know, re-landscaped or what the plans are. And I guess I do need to do some more work to understand how a senior housing overlay zone works. I don't know what it allows and what it doesn't allow after the senior housing is built. So I have questions about that as well. But I think I will leave it there for now, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Go ahead, Neil. He's the Mariano Rivera of speakers.
Too slow, Neil. Robert Hunter. Getting back to the traffic on Route 32. The last 20 years, I've lived here my whole life. The last 20 years, the traffic on Route 32 has gotten ridiculous. We now have 50 to 60 tandem dump trucks daily from the quarry that we have to deal with. They're spewing dust all along the highway. And you expect senior citizens to walk in and out of this place? It's not going to happen. They're going to die. You need to look at this traffic. You need to control it. And I don't know if there's any plan for doing that, but it's not going to work the way they want to do it. You need serious traffic control in this town. We're not getting it. We had an incident about two years ago down by the Niman property, where one of these tandem dump trucks tipped over right on the sidewalk, dumped their whole load. Fortunately, nobody was walking there. The stone is still there if you want to go get it. And, you know, I wish we had a walkable community, but we don't. We don't have proper sidewalks. We don't have proper markings. And there's no stoplights where they should be. That has to change, because the community is changing, and it's getting nutty. So we got to do something about it. So that has to be taken into consideration. Do it, or don't build this thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Kraus. Go ahead. Come on. While we're waiting for Neil to get to the podium, I would like to read, I would like to read from Leo Tolstoy's... Neil, don't listen to him. Take your time. I'm the only one who could do that to Neil.
Neil Kraus, Highland Mills. And if anybody can't hear me, let me know, and I'll talk louder. I'm playing cleanup batter tonight. And before I forget some of the things I'm going to make comments on, I'm asking, has a need survey been done by the applicant to determine the need for senior housing in Woodbury? As I understand it, the last time an informal survey was done with seniors was done in 2002. And nothing has been, and that was informal. So my understanding of the senior housing also is that seniors in Woodbury would have first option for the housing. It would then go out to adjoining municipalities. And if the 84 units could not be done there, then it would be opened up for others. So I'm just asking the board to consider that at the applicant's expense, but under the control of the village board, that a need survey be done with the seniors in Woodbury. It could be done going to the, going to the tax assessor's office, asking for the tax assessor to mail out the survey to those seniors who are getting star exemptions, because that would give you a good portion of the seniors, not just those seniors who go to the senior center, but also the seniors that are not out and active as much. And that the village board could consult with the applicant on what would go in the survey. It would be anonymous. It would go out from the assessor's office and then returned, and you would look at that and see, is there really a need in Woodbury for the housing? Then I want to address a lot of the other things that were addressed tonight. I know the planning board declared a negative declaration. Like some other people have said tonight, I am probably a little bit more than shocked that this, with the environmental issues in this particular site, that a negative declaration was declared. There are Army Corps of Engineer regulated wetlands to the northwest and northeast of the site. But adjacent to the site, there is a stream running through the site that feeds into Woodbury Creek, which is a designated, DEC-designated drought-spawning stream. So anything that would get into that stream on the site could eventually get into a DEC-regulated stream. And I'm concerned about the floodplain area. It is 100-year, I think. But Columbia University, working with other environmental scientists, has determined that 100-year floodplain is now a 50-year floodplain. We have all seen where we have drought periods followed by intense periods of rain. And that is going to intensify over the years. So I'm concerned, it looks like on paper, the planning board took appropriate steps to mitigate the areas I'm talking about. But if a mitigation fails, it could do tremendous damage to our environment, to the wetlands, to the wildlife, to the Woodbury stream and stuff like that. Okay? I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. All right. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this?
Jimmy England Mills. So I'm a little surprised. Everyone came up here and spoke against this project. And I thought I would have to come up there and argue against people that would support this project. up there and argue against people that would support this project. If you told me there was, again, a need for senior housing, I would feel like the worst person in the world to speak against it. But issue after issue, it's not just about senior housing. Steven was here two weeks ago because of runoff flooding destroying his house. Great. Three years from now, we're going to have a whole new group of people telling me about the floods. I basically been told I can't water my lawn every year because there's water issues. Great. Let's build 84 new homes, basically. It doesn't make sense. I was going to come here today and ask you guys, what can we do to put a left turn lane at 105 and Ridge Road just to control the traffic? Wait, you guys are going to put 100-something other cars through this area on a regular basis? We spoke up about the new warehouse in Cornwall for the additional traffic, going back and forth. 100 other cars, great. You know, we just went through Cloverwood, the runoff, the flooding. I commend you on your reports and everything else. It sounds great. They did same thing back then, I believe. It's all in black and white. Well, when that water ran through that man's house, the project managers, whoever's owning, owns the plots, whoever's doing this, did not, oh, timeout, let's stop, because we're damaging his property. We can't do this. Again, let's not call it senior housing. To me, it's a development. We have to be consistent. Any new development comes in, and again, Marines here, dinosaur park, perfect example. We don't want it. It doesn't work. It hurts this area, but people keep coming and coming. The thruway came in asking for water to shower. I mean, these guys are working there. Rob, imagine you guys were not able to take care of your guys, but we had to say no. But let's put these residents there, and what kind of toll on our, on our well water? What are we talking about? I mean, this is like, none of this makes sense to me that we're even in this point to go ahead or not go ahead. Okay? I don't know the area exactly, and I don't want to know the area exactly because it's going to be a disaster. When that water starts running off, how many homes are you going to flood down there? Are you, who's insuring these homes? Are you paying for their flood insurance? See, if I live there, I'm coming after you, whoever's owning this project. Because you know what? It's not automatic flood insurance. Somebody's paying for it. Somebody has to pay for it. What are you going to do? All these studies, great, the rattlesnakes, you know, the raccoons, it's all fine and good. But I care about the people first. That's who you're going to affect first. It all sounds good. You're going to phase in, you're going to do this and that. But I've seen the damage. I've seen people, their investments are out the door. For you guys, it's the business. The other issue is, again, the seniors. What are seniors going to do here? Okay? Remember the old game of Frogger, trying to cross 32? That's exactly what it is. If you thought, you know what, in Queens, it's Queens Boulevard, it's the Boulevard of Death, because seniors have a hard time crossing. Well, we've already seen incidents here. I mean, the residents here know what the issues are. If you saw what was going on on 32, you would not think it's a good idea. If I'm a senior there, I know I'm basically going to be stranded because I can't go anywhere. Again, there's a little dirt path. I could walk along the road and hope I don't get hit. And then I got to, I'm going to cross, which way? Just think, when we're done with this meeting, when I come out, I come out and I make a left. That's not an easy left all the time. I gun it and go. Which senior's going to gun it and go? Because when that time comes, you know what, I don't know how long this project is going to take. You know what, seven years from now, I'm going to ask the board, what the hell were you thinking? How did you approve this? Okay? Because I'm going to go back to this meeting, person after person. In fact, I'm not a well-researched, but I just hear it and I see it. It's the whole big picture. But everyone sees the issues. I would love to see the boards that approve this project because when the accidents or the flooding or when all these problems pop up after this project is approved, built, somebody, somebody's going to, you know, again, you guys are cleaning up the messes from old boards. Don't make a mess for a future board to clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Tom Powell, Sunch Valley. It's came to my attention that there's, Bob, there's over 50 trucks a day coming out of the quarry that are using Route 32. Plus, they are ready in front of the zoning board to try and change their hours of operation. How many more trucks? Has that been looked into the traffic study that we're supposed to? I mean, I know this was started back in 2017, but half of Woodbury Commons, they even looking for more building down there. Okay? So how is Route 32 going to take at least 50 more trucks a day to drive past the senior citizen center and through our town? Route 32 is not big enough for tandem trucks going back and forth. I sat there the other day, almost got hit because a guy didn't want to wait on Ridge, all right? And I was going north on 32, not south. All right? So, I mean, there needs to be a new traffic study. It was nice that you had these layouts and one you brought in had color, and then the other three, eh, why not? Why couldn't you have color on all of them so we know what's going on? Why is there no reference to the flooding that happens off of Spring Lake Road? All right? And the wetlands back there? All right? I've only been there once. I know there's a farm or a barn back there years ago, but that's it. But has anybody on the board taken a walk around that neighborhood? Or we're leaving it to the builders and the developers to tell us what's there? All right? And, I mean, just the amount of traffic, how is a senior citizen? And Andrew, I am one of them now. I'll be 68 in two weeks. I'm a senior citizen. I've been a senior citizen for several years now. I hate it, but, you know, I drive, but there's a lot of people that don't drive. All right? And that's, that's wrong. You cannot, the zoning board, I don't even know what happened with them if they passed it to change the hours of the quarry down there. It used to be SNH Quarry. I don't even know what name it is now. It has no name on the outside, which to me is another building issue. If a business is there, they should have their signage out on the road so people can find out where to go. All right? And the amount of accidents that I've witnessed right there, because people come from Cornwall and they get upset when a tractor trailer pulls out in front of them and then swings into a no parking zone on a curve and hits another truck last week. I mean, there's, there's got to be a better traffic study, Andrew. All right? Before you guys vote and give them the senior citizens, I don't think it's needed in this town because this town's changing. Within 10 years, we're not, we won't be sitting here.
Thank you, Tommy. And on behalf of the board, I say you don't look a day over 69. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak or you have secondary comments you want to bring up? Take your time. We had Neil get up there.
Hi, my name's Chloe. Hello to the board. So I am a representative from 30 Spring Lake Road, and I wasn't planning to speak, but since you bought up the barn, there is a barn down there, and it's beautiful that we, that we own collectively. And we bought the property in 2009, something like that. And in the time that we've owned it, that barn has, excuse me, I'm not a public speaker, that barn has flooded twice in the basement. So our concern is that, that I know there's people live on the other side and they're, you know, their concerns are more real than a barn, but we love our barn and it's very old. So, and also, the first speaker asked a question that we also have about the re, the rezoning of that lot alongside, attaching it to the trailer park slot. Just generally, what is the purpose of that reallocation into an R1A? Like if, it's a wetland, you can't build there, so what, what is the purpose of reallocating it to residential housing? I think that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, George, go ahead, back up there. I got a, I got a few questions based on what the residents were asking. So, George, when was the last traffic study done for this project? Since it has been...
Fortunately, we brought the traffic engineer. He can tell you when it was done, when it was last looked at. He can also tell you about the sidewalk that is proposed to be constructed on the eastern side of Route 32, which I think will address some of the concerns about pedestrian access. And before he does that, I want to mention that in 19, sorry, 2019, I did walk from the entrance, across 32 to the senior citizen center in 12 minutes. And I'm willing to raise Mr. Kraus if I have to.
Do you have a copy of the traffic?
Thanks, George. Ken Worsted with Creighton Manning Engineering, the traffic consultant for the project. Mayor, I don't know if you have additional questions or if you want me to run down. I took some, a few notes.
No, when was, but the biggest question is, when was the last traffic study done?
2020 was when we finished kind of going through some of the DOT and the planning board updates.
Okay.
We started it, obviously, in 2017. The project was slightly different. It went through a couple of iterations. The driveway changed a few times. And through that process, we continuously kind of updated the study as we went forward. And then finally in 2020, we kind of got to a spot where we generally settled in and the project has gone through various, you know, delays and just, you know, processes that the board has, you know, taken it through.
Okay, so there's been no further studies done on traffic since 2020?
Correct.
Since COVID?
Yep. Before COVID, yeah.
Before COVID. Okay. So that, that would be something, but that's more of a planning board issue, but the planning board would, would address that more in terms of looking for an updated traffic study. So what can you tell me about the, the issue? Because this seems to be one of the bigger issues here, flooding, traffic seems to be another, that the residents have brought up here tonight.
Can't speak to the flooding side of things.
I know you can't.
I'll just kind of preface that, you know, how, how does traffic work? We all drove here, you know, today. I counted up how many cars are outside in the parking lot. It's about 33. The project itself is 84 units, give or take. Not everyone has to drive. These are, you know, seniors. They don't have to drive somewhere between 7:00 and 9:00. They don't necessarily have to go to work. They've got some flexibility in when and where they're going. So how do we estimate how much traffic is coming from a project that doesn't exist? Well, we look at other projects. We go through and we count how much traffic comes from other senior facilities, and we count up how many units are in there, and we count up how many cars come and go, and we look at different time periods. Because the traffic is most heaviest on Route 32 during, when people are commuting back and forth, that's generally when we, we focus our, our times from. So when we look at that number of units and we estimate how much traffic is coming to and from, we get about, you know, 20 to 25 cars would come in and out during those peak times. Right? So that's the time when, you know, most residents are commuting to and from work. Well, how many cars are going to come in and out of the senior center during that time? Right? That's how much. It's not, it's less than what this meeting generated in terms of traffic. The other thing we looked at is, is parking. I know that was brought up. And there's a mix of units in here. There's one bedroom, two bedroom, you know, et cetera. And the zoning code may call for a certain amount of parking spaces, you know, per unit. And I think the, the code generally had estimated about 200 spaces were going to be needed from this. We treat parking very similarly. We can go to other senior projects and count up how many units are in there, and we can go in the parking lot and we can count up how many cars are out there in the parking lot, and then, you know, develop a rate, you know, based on that. When we apply that rate to this project, we're estimating between 55 and 60 cars would be needed because A, not all the seniors are going to have their own vehicle. There could be some visitors, but not all of that is going to be demanding parking all at the same time. So one of the options that we proposed and part of the phasing of the project was, would be to look at Phase 1, build out the building first, see how much actual parking demand is proposed for that. And even if we can build all the parking before we build Phase 2, make that determination and see if we really need 200 parking spaces, or if we can get away with, you know, fewer spaces than that. And I think that, again, speaks a little bit to, you know, potential runoff. If we can reduce the impervious surface out there, then we can reduce the amount of flow that comes off the site and goes into, to storage ponds.
Let me ask you this in terms of parking. So staffing-wise, this facility is going to be staffed by building maintenance, landscapers, building and grounds guys. You're going to have plumbers, electricians, contractors coming in. Well, I'm going to get to that. That was on my list. Do you have staff? Is this place going to be staffed?
I believe there'll be, yeah, there'll be, there'll be staff there. The landscaper isn't going to be there every day for eight hours, you know, seven days a week. Right? The post office isn't going to serve it, you know, for eight hours every day of the week. Those are services that are going to come and go, and they're not going to demand parking, you know, full-time. The staff that there will have, you know, an employee, you know, spot or two, whatever they need. So when we look at these other projects, all of that is taken to account. When we talk about how much traffic is generated by a project, well, it includes the employees coming and, you know, going to and from the site itself. It includes services like garbage pickup and landscapers and all of those kind of aspects, you know, included into it.
Okay. Any other question? The board have any questions for the traffic consultant?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Okay. So I know this project's been kicking around for a while, and I know you're a hired traffic consultant, but what role, if any, has the state DOT had in this project? Because that 32 is a state road, and they will have the final say on everything. And tonight I've heard about crosswalks, sidewalks, traffic lights. Has any of that been brought up? Has any of that been discussed?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So the role of DOT, there's, there's kind of two components to it. And I wouldn't say that they have the last say. The town and village kind of control the actual, you know, site plan side of it, but DOT has the authority to say, this is where the driveway goes, and for you to build that, you got to get a permit from us. The, the town and the village can approve whatever you want on that plan, but we need to approve the, the actual driveway getting out to the street. That's their kind of authority of it. So as we've gone through the process, we've shared those plans with them. We've gone through different iterations. We've looked at, you know, turn lanes on Route 32. We looked at a traffic signal at Timber Trail. One of the concerns raised and brought up tonight was getting access from the, from, from this project down south in the village. So we've looked at it providing a sidewalk from this project down the east side of 32, connecting to Ford Avenue, and from there, you've got sidewalks, you know, further to the south to, you know, accommodate that. As they go through their process, they have a three-step, you know, process. First is looking at it conceptually. They want to say, okay, we generally agree with the traffic study, the, the project driveway location, you know, et cetera. And then the second stage of that is going into the details. We want to see the type of pavement that you're putting within the right of way. We want to see the thickness of it, curb radius, et cetera. We haven't even gotten there yet because we're still working through, you know, the, the overall approval process. So they issued a conceptual approval letter in, in 2018, and because it's been so much time, and, and we've had these updates, they want to see, you know, basically an update, you know, to the, to the whole, you know, traffic study. But overall, they've looked at the project. at the project and they've been, you know, updated as we go through this process. And just relative to, I know transit was brought up. There, I believe, there may be a dial-a-ride and a paratransit service provided. And I don't know how the village and the town kind of cross services, you know, operate, but I know the town, on the town's website, there is a, a senior dial-a-bus and rides cost anywhere from 50 cents to a dollar. And I don't know if that applies...
Did they just end that program? The town? You would not. You don't. You got rid of it? Okay. Yeah, that doesn't exist.
I would check then with the county because Transit Orange has some of those services that would be available to the village.
All right, George.
So when I amplify on one thing Ken said, but first...
You have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have a question.
You, sir.
I noticed that you had dismissed the requirement for a left turn lane, particularly at the Timber Ridge Road crossing, which is, as people have noticed, is a real point of congestion because that closes down Route 32 northbound when people are there. And at the same time, have you or you or the developer going to provide additional right of way to the state when that left turn lane is going to be required? Because traffic is going to increase markedly on 32. We know that. Is there any reservations or planning to make that space available since it would have to be along your frontage?
It hasn't been brought up, but I think that's something that we can look into. I think, I want to say that that area may actually have some wetlands nearby, so that obviously becomes a, a factor. Here's, here's the entrance to the project and right here is, is Timber Trail. And Joe might know better, but there's a little sliver of kind of wet hair, wet area through this side of things. And then obviously this hatched area. So I don't know what the implication is, like if it's, you know, significant. But the right of way is generally pretty close to the road. So if a left turn lane were to come in through here, then potentially there is a right of way that would be needed. And we can talk about, talk to the applicant about providing or having a provision that if that is necessary, that there's an allocation for it, certainly.
Just a couple of points on that. There's also a utility line that runs up that side of the road, which creates a cost and, a cost constraint as well as a practical constraint because it would have to be moved further out. We did look at that. We have to, I have discussed that with the applicant, and we're certainly willing to plan for that eventuality. And the one point I was going to make in response to the mayor's comment is, you are approving the opportunity to go to the planning board and have the planning board look at most of these issues, hear what the public has to say about it, make sure the studies do address those concerns. When you look at a specific site plan and that the impacts of the proposed action are being mitigated. So we can't do that unless the zoning is adopted. But because the zoning is adopted, doesn't mean we can do this project either. So I just want to remind the board, as you're well aware, you're just giving us the opportunity to make the case to the planning board. There will be a public hearing. I've been making a list of those different issues that have to be addressed, and we will address them. I can address one of them right now. There is an Army Corps jurisdictional determination, and that has been thoroughly considered by DC and the towns consultants, as well as the wetland specialists that did that work for us. And we've offered, I mean, there's a lot of points I could, I could address them now, but they're really something to pick up during the site plan process and make sure that when we say something, it's being addressed at that point. And the issues are, if we offer mitigation, for example, the applicant is willing to provide a restrictive covenant on the wetland areas that are not involved in this project so that they're undisturbed, which is addressing one of the points I heard tonight. But it, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to tell you that, although I certainly think you'd like to know that, if we're not putting it forward at the planning board stage, when we can tell you exactly, or tell the board exactly where it will be. And it's going to be a condition of that approval, it'll get carried forward. The same thing with the stormwater. The stormwater has got to be reviewed. Notwithstanding the concern about whether or not that review is effective, I do want to point out that not only will your professionals review it, but there will be a stormwater management agreement between the applicant and the village, which will ensure that what happens there gets addressed. So there are mechanisms to address a lot of the concerns I heard. And the, the reference to different places, different projects, different events is certainly valid to bring to your attention. But the point is, it can be addressed with this project inside plan, and it will be addressed. And if it isn't, and it can't be, then something will change about the project. Because the planning board will not be able to approve it unless those things are addressed.
Mr. Lithgow, let me just say, I know why we're here tonight. Okay? I know why you're here. I know what my job is. I am just trying to, I have a lot of residents that came out. All I'm trying to do is just get answers for them, okay, so that they could feel more comfortable when they go home. And at the same time, just help my board get to the point where they need to be with this project, whether they're going to approve it or not. So I know why you're here, what my job is. I know some of these questions that they asked would be more of a planning board question, but they've come, they want answers, and I'm more than happy to do my job and get them answers for it.
I completely agree with everything you just said. I know you know it, and I'm trying to help make sure the public understands that you do know it, and you're going to be certain it will be addressed during the process at the appropriate time.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
I would just sort of like to expand a little bit on the mayor's statement. Because while it's true that there's, the zoning is, you know, part of the, the tail of the dog here, the planning board is going to have to establish whether this works. But for us to address the zoning change, I think you need to provide this board with at least answers to each of these specific questions as to where and where and how that process will be, these things will be resolved. I don't know if that was clear enough.
You're, I understand...
The board, the board also needs these answers now. Not necessarily a specific number of parking spaces, but how the concerns of the residents here have all our program to be addressed at some point in this before the first stone is set.
I can provide a letter to that effect?
That's my request.
That explains where it occurs in the process.
That's my request.
Yes. I mean, like, I was attempting to do that with stormwater. So yes, we will do that. I, I will make a response in chronological order. If there's nothing else, the applicant will...
No, and I'm going to let the, the residents know, those that are here tonight. Because this local law was not on the desk of the trustees within seven days or more than seven days. This is going to be held over to our next meeting on June 13th. So we will not be voting on this tonight. I will, if the boards, if the, if it's the board's pleasure, keep the public hearing open, considering that so many people did speak here tonight. June 13th is also our reorg meeting, so if you plan on coming back, please, please bring snacks, okay? You should be cooking us food.
Mr. Mayor, I just...
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to encourage the members of the, well, this is really your place. But what I would hope is, the issues that would be raised at the adjourned hearing would be new issues that have not been raised so far. I think we have a clear punch list of things that we have to address, and I think we can address them to your satisfaction.
All right, George. Thank you. And I want to thank the residents that did come out. You made a lot of valid, solid points. I think the one thing that we didn't touch on enough is probably emergency personnel. In terms of ambulance and fire, we are facing extraordinarily large shortages of, of emergency personnel. So it is something to consider. Mickey, you want to add anything? Our water sewer superintendent?
Yeah, what I'd like to try to understand is how are we going to be able to approve this if we have a water...
Is the planning board aware of that?
The planning board is aware of that. And just to remind the board that that was something that came up in your agreement with the applicant, and that this really wouldn't be able to go forward until that issue is resolved.
The applicant is fully aware of that. It cannot start construction until, I think it's 2007, when you anticipate the EPA order will be resolved and...
27. We're not going back in time.
Some days I feel like that's a better way to go. So we do understand that, and that was a point I did want to make because it also applies to water in that there's not going to be anything, hopefully by 2027, your water issue will be resolved and moratorium will be gone.
All right, George. All right, can I have a motion in a second to carry over?
Mr. Mayor?
You want to? Yep, that's fine. Okay. So written comments will still be accepted, okay?
Mayor Jack Amaza, could I mat down here?
Yep, sure. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment and to make the public aware too. In the negative declaration we received from our lawyer, Kelly, and the planning board, no one here, we've been addressing flooding, but no one here really addressed the water moratorium. The county has to approve that this project will have enough water before anything even gets built. So until we have our water situation sorted out, this project really can't move forward. I want to echo some agreement with what's come from the audience tonight, too. There's definitely issues with traffic and flooding here, and sometimes what's, seems very solid on paper may not be in reality. And with that, I think I, we can keep the whole hearing open.
Okay.
The motion.
So you're making that motion?
I'll make the motion.
To keep the public hearing open. I have a motion from trustee Fabro to keep the public hearing open.
Adjourn till June 13th.
There you go. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's it. George, you're done.
I hope the rest of the agenda will be short.
The rest of the agenda will be short. You just, I know. Thanks, George, because George has got to get out of here. All right. Public comment on agenda items only. Ken Verona, you can't leave. All the plants will die if you leave the building. That's a good line. That's awful. All right, anyone, public comment on agenda items only. Going once? Go ahead. And I will read from Macbeth as we wait for him to get to the podium. I love Neil. I love Neil.
Just short. No, I'm not just short, but...
Is that mic on?
Under, under new business B, was you're, you're looking at passing a resolution to support the Orange County Preservation Fund. Just, just a quick background. On November 2nd, Orange County Legislature passed unanimously that any municipality in Orange County that would like to establish a preservation fund to, they, they didn't have to go through, wouldn't have to go through, each individual municipality would not have to go out to go to the state to get approval. That if, if, if this was approved, any municipality in Orange County could go to a public ref, directly to a public referendum and do, and do a community preservation fund. It would be, it would be, it would, subject to a public referendum. So it wouldn't be taking any rights away from the local municipalities, but it would shorten the process and they, and the municipalities wouldn't have to go to the state. Westchester County has already passed a countywide resolution doing this. Ulster County has also passed a countywide resolution. I believe Duchess County has, I'm not sure, Duchess County is working on it. And the intent is that it, they're trying to get the lower Hudson Valley, all the counties in lower Hudson Valley to do this. So I would just hope that tonight, that the board would approve the, really sending a letter of support to our state, a state assembly person and our state senator to move this along.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else?
I thank you for your vote, all in advance.
So I just wanted to clarify for the board and for Neil and for the public, that the resolution that was passed by the Orange County Legislature refers to John Municipal Law, Section 6S, I think. And that specifies only towns and cities. It actually specifically excludes villages. But, but that's how the existing law is now, when it refers to Westchester County, Putnam County, et cetera. So this is really a first foot in the door for Orange County to be included, but certainly, you know, you can reach out to your senator, assemblyman, whatever, to try and then get villages included in this because right now it still is only towns and cities, even for those other counties that have the ability to do this.
Thank you, Attorney Norton. All right, anything, anyone else on anything on public comment on agenda items only? All right, moving along to administrative business. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the meeting held on May 9th, 2024? Motion by trustee Furelli. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Suriello. All in favor?
Comments?
Sure.
This is in response to the draft May 9th meeting minutes, public comments, page two. The current entry was limited to Mr. Steve Gargano, a resident living on Oakland Avenue, along with his wife Jeanette, presented the issue of flood that caused damage to the property. Due to a notice of claim filed by Mr. Gargano, the board was advised to refrain from responding to Mr. Gargano's questions and comments by Attorney Norton. The May 9th village minutes reflect the board, reflect to the board members that this was only marginally addressed in the minutes. The minutes make no mention of my statement of concern. To help Mr. Gargano's issue, we needed more information, but the minutes did not mention my request that Mr. Gargano wait for the end of the meeting for us to talk. Mr. Gargano agreed...